This is the Cochise Board of Supervisors work session for Tuesday, April 8th at 2:00 00:25 at 2:00 PM at the Board of Supervisors hearing room, 1415 Melody Lane Building, G Visby, Arizona 85603 pursuant to 38-ARS 38 431.02H. The public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app via phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714, conference ID 989-225-912. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors and public comment will not be taken. We have Ms. Sharon Gilman. We have Mr. Dan DeShawn. We have Mr. Joe Casey. We have Ms. Kathleen Gomez, myself, Tom Crosby, the Vice Chairman, and Mr. Antonori is temporarily absent, but we will talk about this possible direction regarding emergency management departments financial position. Mr. DeShawn, would you care to address this this afternoon?
Yes, good afternoon. Dan DeShawn, Director of Emergency Management. So we'll talk about the emergency budget, grants, sources of funding, and some upcoming challenges that we expect. To begin with, the emergency management budget, it's a little bit smaller than the sheriff's. There's just two employees and supplies, equipment, and software. However, as the theme we heard earlier was the split of employees here, we have a unique split where almost the entire budget is 50% match. It's 50% from the county and 50% from the grantor. So that makes up the majority of the general fund budget. There's a smaller amount, roughly $19,800, that's not matched in the general fund. And then for our grants, we have some recurring grants that happen every year. This year, it's about $23,000. It fluctuates between $20,000 and $25,000. And then we have some one-time grants, and this year that total was $160,000. For the core grants, I'll just get into it, and the challenges here is the Emergency Management Performance Grant. It comes from FEMA down to state emergency management, DEMA, and it's a 50% match. So unfortunately, we've received 10% cuts in this grant of three years in a row. So it is taking a toll. In the upcoming budget year, which would be the third year of 10% cuts in a row, with the board maintaining flat funding, our match could decrease from 50% to 45%. And long-term, there is talks, again with the changes in FEMA, DHS, and the federal government, where the EMPG grant could transition from opposed to funding staff and annual recurring expenses. It could be transitioned to one-time projects where it's a 50% match. And the terms we've seen is that it's used to build emergency management capabilities, not necessarily maintain them. So if an organization needs to improve its capabilities, that match will help get the organization there, but the organization is then obligated to maintain those capabilities themselves. That's a long-term trend. We could see maybe over the next five years. Again, there's a lot of uncertainty with FEMA here. So going into that in the next slide, the grant itself is currently under manual review by FEMA and DHS, coming from the White House, where it needs to be reviewed for nexus to NGO and immigration support and reviewed for sanctuary city jurisdiction.
I would comment, which is, I'm familiar with the Stonegarden grant money, which came from FEMA. And when I started looking at that, what I discovered was the FEMA money is made for one-time hurricanes, and then hurricane's gone, it's not going to be in the same place again. It's not going to be administered by the same branch of government or locality again, and so on and so forth. So that's why FEMA money is, as you mentioned, it's kind of designed, it isn't designed for year after year after year use, like the Border Patrol used it for, I don't know, a couple decades or something like that to work.
So yes, that individual assistance or public assistance funding from FEMA is not recurring funding. It's for one-time expenses. You know, that's at the national level. However, this core program, over the last, don't quote me here, several decades, it has transitioned to an annual program and support for local governments. But with the way things are trending, the cut in funding, the recent executive orders, the talk in the emergency management committees is it could revert back to helping an organization build a capability, but not sustain it. So there could come a day at some point in time where it's not able to fund the employees and only fund specific projects. Supervisor Antonori, we're just talking about the core grant here, and it's not looking good. See, I haven't missed anything positive. We're looking at our third year of 10% cuts in a row here, and the grant is, it's not paused, but it's being manually reviewed by DHS. Well, I'm not worried about these two categories. We weren't doing NGO and immigration stuff, and we're not a sanctuary city. That is being reviewed by the federal government.
This is just initially to get you out there if there's an emergency, and then hopefully we'll get emergency funding if there is an emergency. If we have a disaster or something, this is just to have the resources ready to go when it happens, and then hopefully we'll get additional state and federal disaster funds.
Was DEMA funding buses going from here to Tucson or wherever they're going with illegal animals in?
Yes.
Okay. What was that called? Border Security?
I, yes, they were, as far as I know, they were using the border security funds.
Not the emergency.
No, this is a separate grant. So none of this money was spent on busing migrants.
So border security is a matter of semantics.
Yes. Supervisor Antonori, to answer your question about funding coming down, so the state doesn't provide funding to local governments during emergencies, if there's a state disaster, they would reimburse the county on expenses the county itself incurred.
Oh, okay.
Up to 75%.
What if we needed fire bombers and stuff like that?
So that would come from, it depends on who owns.
Where the jurisdiction of the fires.
Exactly. If it's state fire, they would pay for that. For service, be allowed, the federal government would pay for that.
So I'm looking at your programs here, like.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's just a snapshot of the FEMA. Those aren't all my programs.
Okay, okay, thank you. So this is just FEMA's snapshot, okay.
Yes, I was showing where you got the red mark there for review.
Okay, got you, got you. Okay. Oh, I see what you're saying there. It is okay.
So what if, well, just the other day, Brown Canyon caught on fire a very short time, and it's all in the windiest days. So as far as this reimbursement, would you be the guy calling the fire bombers and then hoping to get reimbursed, or what?
No, I, the county nor I provide fire protection. In that example, we would send the emergency alerts for the evacuation of the community. Now, once the citizens are out, we would set up a shelter at a local high school or gym or church with the red flag.
You're the one that sent out the emergency alert, because I got it on my phone.
Excellent.
Thank you.
So yes, we send the emergency.
Okay. And so then you have some kind of surveillance for a local county, or just, do you rely on somebody calling you and saying, there's smoke over here, and then you investigate? I mean, how do you, how are you on top of when things are just about to, you know?
We work the dispatch centers. There's a CCOM dispatch center, Benson Dispatch Center, and Douglas.
Okay.
And then for fire, there's Tucson and Phoenix for state and federal fire dispatch. They know when it's time for evacuation, they'll call emergency management to work on that or send the alerts.
So the first call system was in Brown Canyon was to Alameda's Fire District, say, got a fire.
Yeah, so that was Fry Fire, CCOM dispatched them, and then they called us when it was time to, they never did an evacuation, it was a, it was alert.
They said, prepare to evacuate, then they said, changed our mind.
Yes.
Last Monday or?
It's intriguing to me, because you know, the fires, it was so dry right now. Is it just something like, who sees it first? Is it something that you, people call you guys, or?
The COVID.
911?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When they had the big monument fire, the border patrol cameras saw it first to my moment.
Okay, and then they send you.
Yeah, it goes to.
It goes to CCOM 911.
And then?
Yes.
And your office is right there.
Yes, we do have an office in Sierra Vista, at the CCOM building, and an office here in the Melody Lane complex.
And then people with ham radios and stuff, I mean, do they contact you and stuff? Is there a public kind of, because I know some of them who are very into this, and they tell me that, you know, they're always looking for something. But do you have public input?
I necessarily won't receive calls from the public. I do, but as far as the initial responses, someone, it's almost always someone calling 911.
Okay.
And we do have amateur radio volunteers that do provide some services to the county.
Those guys have the radio to phone capability, too. They can have another guy call.
Okay, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really, it's coming back, which is, you know.
And we have that capability, yeah, at CCOM.
Yeah.
Ham radio guys are pretty cool. I used to go up to the one on top of Mount Lemon they did every year. All the ham radio guys, and you talk to people all over the world. It was pretty cool.
So here's a snapshot of the grant funding. Again, this is just that 50% match. See, it increased over COVID, down, and now the third year.
It's actually below average now.
Yes.
Yeah.
And these are non-recurring projects. When we talk about building, sustainability's or one-time projects, we use this money in '20 and '21 for some CCOM radio maintenance, again, to build that capability, which is that interoperable trunk system and radio maintenance there. And then we've had some smaller projects over the last few years. So if things continue in this direction, you could see a decrease in the annual expenses and an increase in our non-recurring project-based expenses. Other grants, we have a myriad of other grants. The last slideshow that John put together here, each one of those was its own page. I condensed it a little bit. Lots of acronyms. So the first one is the State Homeland Security Grant Program. It needs to be a nexus to terrorism. And five, six years ago, I partnered with the Sheriff's Office and had done some grants for them. So you'll see those years back, for example, SPOT supplies.
What is the counter drone system?
So we had, again, years ago, there was a drone system that would detect drones in the air and could identify where the operator was.
Like if it's an emergency and they're interfering with, like, fire planes and that kind of thing?
Exactly. So we've used the SHISHGAP grant there, the Homeland Security Grant Program for some actress supplies for local fire departments, getting them ballistic vests and medical kits with that, to treat mass hemorrhaging, tourniquets, QuickClot, the counter drone system, cyber resiliency, Conex, I'm sorry, not a Conex, but a Pelican case, you know, with Wi-Fi satellite phones.
Cyber resiliency is for us?
It was for CCOM. In case they went down, they could open an off-the-grid ability to receive phone and internet and Wi-Fi.
In case they got ransomware or something is out there?
Yeah. Or it's just a long-term power outage.
Shut down.
We did some live fire training for the firefighters, SWAT supplies for the Sheriff's Office, the HMVP is Hazardous Materials Emergency Program through ADQ, where we worked, contracted to write a hazmat plan, and then some more SWAT equipment for the Sheriff's Office. And this year, we received a fit tester for the firefighter's self-contained breathing apparatus to help them on their hazmat responses. And you can see all those have been expensed and received and closed out, except the last one, that fit tester. In that one, I put a note that that grant is also being manually reviewed by FEMA and DHS at the moment. But from the county side, it's closed out and we've submitted all our paperwork.
What, were you trying to test the fit of a mask?
Yeah, exactly. And then upcoming grants, the Community Welfare Protection Plan, which we spoke about a couple weeks ago, and the board approved that 10% match for that. And then we do have two requests in for the upcoming cycles of the hazardous material program for some HazWopper training, hazardous material training for our public works employees, and also to work on some contractor support for some hazmat plans.
What is preparation for, like, any kind of fire in the solar farms? Would that be something, I mean, you guys were doing exercises a couple months ago, right?
We've done some tabletops about hazmat emergencies with the solar farms. Actually, that wasn't specifically for the solar farms, but the Local Emergency Planning Committee. We talk about that often and work with Development Services.
Okay.
You know, unfortunately, the plans, depending on the severity, might be letting it burn out.
Yeah, pretty much where we be, because it's so expensive to try to, you don't have the chemicals to be stored to be able to put out a solar farm panels.
Clean it up after you deploy.
And that's the big concern.
Because they have to go in there individually. I mean, manually, it's not like you can drive fire trucks through there, so.
And some of the newer ones, they're designed where they're supposed to not run away and spread from panel to panel to panel.
But we don't know if we have that, do we, in our part?
I would have to get that.
You don't trust them, do you?
Yeah, exactly.
But as part of their permitting process, working with Development Services, they now have to submit emergency plans with contacts and very specific maps.
As I recall, Cochise County was like on the cutting edge of having some kind of, like, deposit by whoever puts these things in to take them out when they're done. You remember that?
I don't.
Okay, had to hit up whoever was in the development.
Because I didn't hear that. I don't remember. Does it ring a bell?
Making it up, and I think it's a good idea.
It's a good angle. But I've never heard anyone say they do that. It's just like, they leave them, and that's our responsibility. Once it's, what they call it, when they deactivate it or whatever, and it would just be left to the county to clean it up. Well. You might be right. I just don't remember that part of the discussion, but it had been many years.
Polyotopy.
Yeah.
Somebody should do something.
Yeah, they should.
And one last chart here about our grant fund balance. All of our grants in this department are all, we spend first and then get reimbursement after the fact. So the downside of that is that that grant fund is always in the red for the most part.
It'll even out eventually.
Yes. So that's it for my slides, and I'll go back to the beginning slide. As we're going to hear this from in our budget work session, you had asked about, you know, the cut, the percentage, and what if the grant goes away. In this case, I would predict the grant could continue to decrease, and we have two employees in the general fund, but it's also reimbursed by the grant. So at some point, the board and administration will have to make a decision about, does this program exist because we want to fund an emergency management department, or does this program exist because there's a grant? And it's an exact 50-50 match.
How about, how about, I gotta be careful what I say right here. You can explore.
It's a safe space.
So this goes to the CCOM, CCOM question. So combine, bring CCOM into the county and combining them and the emergency management, making them all one agency.
Wait, wait, no, no, no.
No, I'm just.
Reducing, eliminating, you take CCOM and then Emergency Management Agency, and you combine them into one, and you put the position in CCOM, under CCOM, as it manages all the alerts for fires, they manage all that's in one, in one place. They handle disaster relief, they handle coordinating disaster relief, they handle shelters, they handle all in one, one roof. Well, previously, you had said something along the lines of it is a fundamental county responsibility for that dispatcher.
Yeah, most other counties, the 911 system thrown by the county.
I've heard models where the, they're not maybe combined, but they're within the same department. There's a lot of similarities, but there's also a lot of differences.
Yeah, some of it may or may not. I'm just, I'm just spitballing out there, offering, you know, consolidating to look at ways of, you know, maybe sharing some cost or dividing some cost.
Anything's possible. When you read the statutes, it doesn't dictate the size or composition of the department. It just says that each county and municipality must provide for it. So this was rolled into CCOM, you could charge for it.
Yeah, that's true.
Right now, the municipalities embarrassingly are nominally providing for it.
But we do have a lot of what the emergency management program does benefits, not just Cochise County, but special districts within Cochise County, like the fire districts rely a lot on some of the support and training that his office provides. So I can see, I can see some connections.
Anything's possible.
What's the top size of your committee?
The Local Emergency Planning Committee has nine members, but they're volunteering.
And that, or is that as big as you want to be?
It's actually up to the committee. They have to hit certain groups per statute. It outlines who should participate, but I don't believe it outlines the exact number.
Do you think you have good representation geographically within the county?
Yes, I think so. We had almost all the groups in the statute. We got representatives from Douglas, St. David's, Sierra Vista, Benson.
I think people that, like, are, they're on the fire department or police department, I mean, is that where you draw your committee members from?
Yes.
Okay.
And people that are just interested. Not everybody is a government employee. Aren't there some, they're retirees and they just want, I want to be on a committee type of thing?
No, it's, you can't just join the committee. You have to be approved by the LAPC.
Okay. So everybody who is on the committee is a government employee of some kind?
No, there's two members. One is, one of the categories is a member of the press, and that gentleman works for SSVDC, doing the media outreach. And then there's a member, which is owner-operator of a hazmat facility, and we have someone from Apache Nitrogen there.
Oh.
That's cool.
Hazardous chemical knowledge?
They would know.
Yeah.
So are there any questions about the emergency management funding sources?
Just, what was your last biggest, you know, emergency that you saw that took money and, you know, yet was that one of the fires? Is that your most biggest concern?
Yeah, it's fires and flooding. By the numbers, we've had more flooding declarations in the county and in the state. We've seen more damage to flooding than we have in fires over the last 10 years.
Wow.
Yes.
Hydraulics, man. Mr. Chair, before we adjourn, after you got abducted, there was a figure that was put up, and it was referred to Slide Number Two, which is probably going to be smaller of the, yeah, that's this sheriff's office. Stacy said $54 million under their control. When I asked about the general fund versus board of funding totals, so you might want to look at Page Number Two for that breakout. That's where it was called, under their control. So I talked to her during lunch about a couple of things related to this slide right It'll be an interesting discussion.
This discussion happens when there's a county.
Uh, Sharon's not budget?
Well, then we also have discussion against us on.
Yeah.
Going through the spreadsheet with Stacy and Sharon, going down, saying, nope, drop this down, drop this down, drop this down.
Prejudice.
About contingencies having to do with yea or nay on. Well, I'm talking about, well, no, I'm talking about, like, going through and reducing, again.
Yeah, I'm saying.
We find money to shift priorities in the county to other things that I think, and I don't know what you guys think, but, you know, like roads, for example. We're trying to find more funding, you know, to plus up our road maintenance in the county. So some priorities are going to shrink so that we can shift stuff to other priorities based on, what's that? No, based on, and so there's, you know, like I was talking to Sharon, there's certain departments within the county that due to, let's just say, the border security dividend, like we had after the Gulf War, we had the peace dividend that allowed the government to claim to cut spending. Now that we have a relatively secure order, there's going to be a reduction in impact to certain agencies within the county. So maybe we can reduce that impact and shift the money over to other priorities. But we have to have that discussion amongst us after the various departments present their budgets to Sharon, and Stacy does the roll of, then I, just back on my experience, going through those line by line, trying to justify yes or no for that dollar, and say, okay, well, if that's not the case, how much do you want to reduce by? 3%, 5%, 8% or whatever, and then have a running tally of plus and minus, plus and minus, to show where we're at money-wise. And then, and then we could, we could do several things, you know? One is also shift more money to the pension line, though. We can start paying that down a little faster. Shift money to roads to maybe expand road maintenance and stuff. I just saw, I got another email this morning from the Ocatillo folks, the trucks driving down the road again today.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah. So, you know, they're crying about that road out there. And then I got another one about Turkey Hill this morning, or Turkey Creek, Turkey Creek this morning. I'm constantly getting them.
Yeah.
I mean, this is the, you know, the roads, the roads, the roads. And I just said it when I was on the campaign trails. Four out of five people surveyed said roads, 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 roads. I mean, that was the, that was the big driver. So we gotta.
Add something.
Look at some of the priorities, and, you know, I think, I think there's some departments that can see some reductions.
What is the SWAT camp? What's SWAT stand for?
Special Weapons and Tactics.
You never thought it when you were a kid?
Yeah, but that comes under emergency management, not the.
So that was a grant that we processed for the sheriff's office.
Okay.
Dun, 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 dun.
Well, I was thinking, this is quite the same thing.
Yeah. You never saw it, the breadth.
So then, you have a split, too, here in your budget that goes to the sheriff.
That was, that isolated grant, three, four years ago.
But you remember?
I don't process any more grants for the years.
Oh, there was.
Or it happened maybe two, three times.
Gotcha, gotcha. I wonder what the SWAT robot was?
It's a little robot they, like, throw in a room.
Really?
And then it has a camera and a remote control. Actually, pretty cool.
And then you, they can come out.
Yeah.
And then they SWAT it.
It's just, it's just, you can see, just so they can see.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's somebody in, I saw that, and I'm, one of those five things that goes.
Lots of funny videos.
Like a bomb and stuff like that.
Yeah. You know, when I saw it, it was actually really small, two-wheel. I thought it was going to be like this big thing that was on treads, with like an arm.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's the problem.
It's actually one they throw.
That's the EOD room.
Yeah. It was a little underwhelming.
All right, well, that's cool. Okay. No, I mean, I'd be, I just can't wait for a fire because, oh, freaking dry, I mean, out by us, going north and all that on 191. It's just so dry.
Absolutely. Warm and dry winter.
So tomorrow, the planning and zoning meeting tomorrow, are we going to discuss the Pierce thing at that, or is this just their?
No, this is the joint meeting between planning and zoning and the Board of Supervisors to discuss kind of this future, perhaps, of some changes to the zoning that you're doing.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was on a different wavelength.
Yeah, so.
To talk to them, like, you know, just how they work with the staff, because one of the things I kept on finding was staff would ask us to approve, they would deny, and then even remember when there was that one.
Are you talking about the board?
I'm talking about how the PNC Commission. I'm talking about how the PNC commissioners, what their feedback is and how they deal with the staff. Because there's been a lot of complaints to me about staff not.
I'm just looking at the challenges in dealing with all those deep-funk subdivisions out there.
Right, and that's the other thing, because that's part of.
Is that, is that all we were talking about or no?
Yeah.
The deep-funk subdivision?
Well, I mean, the.
No. R E four versus SR one.
Twenty-three.
Whatever it is, one seventy-four.
And then some of their, like you want to know the procedure, some of their ILOs.
Yeah. Because some of the, you know.
Who's taking over for Dan now?
Currently we have interim director Christine Woffen. She'll be here. So she's acting in the interim.
For instance, they haven't really, they said to me, had a lot to do with the compromise plan, which they, by statute, are supposed to be very involved in it. So I thought it was a good way for them to be able to explain maybe to us on some things that they see maybe we could change to make it better, more efficiently, so that we don't spend half an hour up here saying, trying to figure out what's, you know, what's a good compromise, does this make sense? You know, like we have in the past.
You're also the appeal authority. You gotta keep that in the back of your head.
Well, yeah, but if they come like, if one of the first cases we had.
Emergency management.
No, no, you can go.
You can go, yeah.
You don't have to hang out. You want to hang out, you can. But I mean.
Well, what's your thoughts, remember when he came and then we had worked on a compromise after it came to us?
Well, yeah, that's what.
But Dan had said, oh, well, that's what I really wanted you to do.
Yeah, but again, we got, I get where you're coming from. We gotta be careful we don't interject in that part because we're the appeal authority. They come to us for the appeal.
But make your own independent decision.
Right.
Right. Make your independent.
Right, and I understand that, but if the staff is thinking, oh, and he said to me, well, what you guys decided on was what we really wanted. So why didn't he bring that to us instead of asking us?
Okay, I know that.
Let's talk about all of that tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that was what we were talking about. So with that, tomorrow, April 9th, will be the next meeting at 2:00 PM to discuss and get an overview of planning and zoning responsibilities. So with that, nothing further? All right, we're done.